We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order, if you would please stand. I'd like to recognize Pastor Lopez from the VFW. If you would come forward and leave us in the invocation.
Good evening, I'm Captain and Reverend Mr. Ramon Lopez, chapter of the VFW Post Forty-Third to here in Odessa, Texas. And I would like to say a couple things here before we do the invocation. During the Civil War, Abraham Lincoln heard someone saying, "Be hopeful, the Lord was on the Union's side." Lincoln replied, "I am not at all concerned about that, for I know that the Lord is always on the right side." But it is my constant anxiety and prayer that I and this nation should be on the Lord's side. It seems that things have gone away from him since the 60s and so forth. But I pray that this city and its citizens and all those that are represented by those that are here today would be considered, not just his creation, for he created us all, but his children. And if we are his children, then we are his people. And we are told that if my people, which are all by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek my faith and turn from their wicked ways, then I will give them heaven. I will forgive their sins and I will heal their lives. Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Precious heavenly Father, we thank you and we bless you and we exalt you. We glorify your holy name. We thank you that today we are gathered together here to make decisions that will be lasting and is a fact. Father, let your wisdom, let your understanding and let your anointing and your presence be felt in a tangible way. And bless these men and ladies, they have listened to these possessions. Father, we thank you that the people of Odessa choose wisely their leaders. Father, I also ask that you would protect all those that protect our streets and our city. I ask that you would protect and bless all the citizens of this city. And I continue to ask my heavenly Father that today will be a day that will be remembered by those present because your presence will be felt today. For we invite you, for we are gathered together in your precious name. And your word says, there were two more gathered together in my name. I will be at the midst of them. Father God, we thank you this evening and we give you praise and glory in the name that is above every name, the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. And at this time, please scout troop, 1908 will post the flags.
Color guard hold. Color guard prepare to present the colors. Color guard post the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the leader of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Two, color guard retreat. Color guard hold. Color guard, eyes, audience, eyes.
You may proceed. Alrighty guys, come back up. You have to announce your name, we know the routine. I just want to say on behalf of the city, thank you. Thank you for your patriety too. And thank you for the leadership you're showing by coming up and presenting our flags. Brandon, you raise your hand.
Brandon.
Brandon. Gabriel? Good job. Andrew? Mario? Marcos? Isaac? Gunnar? Can we give them a round of applause? We have a few proclamations that we would just present. First is the VFW Buddy Poppy Mark. Pastor Lopez, are you receiving for the VFW? I will go ahead and read the proclamations and then I will let you give you a chance to speak. So City of Odessa proclamation, whereas the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars in the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by government leaders since 1922. And the VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and their widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in a desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, I, David R. Turner, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Odessa, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2016, VFW Buddy Poppies Month. Do I, the City of Odessa, urge all citizens to remember the many gallant and brave men and women who have risked their lives in defense of our freedoms, which as American citizens live in today? Thank you very much.
Thank you sir. As the mayor has well stated through this wonderful and most beautiful proclamation, the Buddy Poppies help us to remember those that gave their life for precious country by helping those of us that survived the effects of the war for the service time that we spent in our military. The Buddy Poppies are annually during this month offered, distributed to the public, hoping that here in Odessa I can give proof and evidence that the people in this city are generous and those communities that come and shop in or sit here are very generous. They open up their heart and they help us raise the budget if necessary to help those veterans and their families in times of need or grief. See, they help us, I'm a member of the Ado Guard, and they help us through those military funerals at no expense to the VFW because the donations come in. And the donations that come into the Buddy Poppies also help us to help the children, like the MHMOR, we give a wonderful meal of 300, 400 people. During the month of July, we give bicycles to the children and we have the DPS come in and help us to teach them and obey the rules of bicycling. In Christmas, we give our toys, but those are some of the things that we do by daily each and every day when somebody comes into our post and they need help. Help is there. We help our veterans. We all the veterans of the foreign wars and there's other organizations which I belong to also, who help our veterans. But we use the Buddy Poppies, the little red flower, as we offer it to the public, as we distribute it, by asking, hoping that their hearts will be generous. And a penny is just as good, if nothing, a smile will be greatly appreciated. But if you leave something that's made out of paint, that also will be appreciated in a great way. But like I said, we'll be over here in the two Walmart's and the sales and the first cafeteria and also I'm hoping at the HEB. And I hope that when you see us out there, give us at least a smile. Let us not offend you by offering you this Buddy Puppy. If you're in a hurry, we understand that. But if you could take a few seconds and tell me that your grandson, that your brother, that your uncle, that your son or you yourself have been, I will listen to your story because it's all about brotherhood. All these gentlemen out here, they have a closeness within them. And I don't care what boy you sort in, we love you and you are our brothers or sisters. Thank you very much.
Let me buy the first puppy and then council would like to buy some.
There you go.
You see it's so cute.
The mayor is up in the dock, giving a Buddy Puppy.
Thank you sweetheart. All of them, right up there.
Make sure you get at least a smile.
Thank you.
Is that big one?
Yeah, you got it. That's yours.
Those sticks?
These are some of the knives and the twenty-fourth day thing. These are some simple things that can be transported, even dollars, man. And for the people that will be out there, will have one of these things in our suitcase, whatever they have around here. Thank whatever you call this, buddy. So we're not there to fight for this. So there's a whole lot of people out there. So we are not fighting for this. We can't help it. We definitely shouldn't do it, for further. Thank you.
We will continue to let her make the room. She's lucky, you and I am, so listen to me when you want to. Next, we'll keep Odessa Beautiful, work presentation, Chris.
Good evening. As part of our presentation, we would like to invite Ms. Laura Spitt from Chevron to come up. Thank you so much for being here. Tonight, we wanted to express our deepest appreciation to Chevron for their sponsorship of Keep Odessa Beautiful and their generous contribution of $10,000. With this amazing gift to our organization, we plan to continue implementing our programs such as our upcoming fall tree planting of neighborhoods, our fall recycle fashion show. And this gift will also give us the ability to continue supporting our schools in their recycling endeavors by providing them requested items such as recycled bins and supplies. We thank you so much for supporting our mission to continue bettering our community. Thank you very much.
Next, we have the Crime Stoppers and Police Department of Work. So we'll recognize Susan Rogers and Chief Burton.
Better look.
Okay, better looking.
I'd like to ask Chris over from Lamar Billboards, come up please. Lamar Billboards has specifically, Chris, teamed up with Odessa Crime Stoppers and the Odessa Police Department a couple of years ago and offered us a crime fighting tool in the way, digital billboards. We have, for the last couple of years, taken them up on their offer and used those billboards to display fugitives, crimes that we're interested in solving, public service announcements and events that are going on with the Odessa Police Department and the Crime Stoppers. Lamar Billboards has been instrumental in solving some of the crimes that we've displayed there. And we want to thank Chris and Lamar for their service to our community and we had requested a flag be flown over the state Capitol in appreciation of your support to our community. We want to tell you thank you.
Chris, unfortunately Chief Burton didn't make it this evening.
Or criminal disorder for that matter.
But on behalf of the men and women of the Odessa Police Department, I just wanted to present you with a small token of appreciation for everything you've done for the department. Want to echo what Susan said, but I want to add one thing. Yes, the billboards were instrumental, in my opinion, apprehending. But what is often forgotten is the peace of mind it gives our victims. And I'll give you an example of a homicide victim. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to capture the individual responsible for that crime. However, the family, it gives a peace of mind to the family knowing that the department hasn't cared about their loved one. And when they see the picture of their loved one on the billboard, it reminds them that the community and the police department have not forgotten about them. And so, thank you. Now I know this didn't fly over the Capitol, but it did hang in my office.
Thank you all. And Susan, we're just trying to be good corporate citizens. This, we think this is a duty and we do this out of a sense of obligation. And we'll continue to do it and do it to the best of our ability.
Okay, next we'll move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move number six of the resolutions to our next agenda item.
Okay, do we have a mo- with a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll consider an outside agency request for hotel motel tax funding. Mr. Morton.
Thank you Mayor and Council. Gene Collins is here to make a request for hotel motel tax funds. Come on up, Gene.
Thank you, Mayor Turner, members of this council, members of the staff, I'm Gene Collins, 717 Oxford Drive here in Odessa, Texas. A native Odessa, I tell you, a business owner, minister and did quite a few things in the community. One of which I am here to represent at this time. In 1966, the Epti County Independent School District decided to close the all-black high school in Odessa, Texas, displacing hundreds of African-Americans as a result of many of us moved to new schools in the middle of our education. But we did vow to keep the memory and all of the legacy of Blackshire High School alive by having biannual reunions for the full school. It has been 50 years since Blackshire closed, but still we're having reunions and it's not just about school. It's about a culture that we enjoy that propelled us to very high levels in this society. And we feel that the stories are worth remembering and worth retelling. We've never asked the council for any help. We have gone door to door begging, getting money where we could. But this year's a little different. After 50 years, some of us cannot go door to door, but we still have a message. And we feel that this year, in remembrance of 50 years of closing, we want to do some things special. We've started a Hall of Fame for those who have graduated, who excelled and who made good in life. The City of Odessa probably doesn't even know some of these people who have made tremendous contributions to society. One of which I, comes to mind is my first cousin, Lafayette Collins, who finished as a C student at Blackshire High, but went on to college and then was in Army Intelligence in Vietnam. He was decorated there. He came back to the United States and went to China with Nixon. When he came back from there, he was in the Secret Service and he was over the Reagan White House. A lot of you didn't know that an Odessa was that, but his story didn't stop. When Bush became governor, he made him, put him on the parole board and when he became president, he became the first and only Odessa who was a presidential appointee. And by that I mean went through the Senate confirmation and all. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't think we've had another presidential appointee. That's just one of the stories. We have people like Dorothy Jackson, who started the nursing program, the UTPB, that is functioning now. And some who may not have made those types of contributions. As a result of the reunion, we started the James Elkins Singers. We sing not only here, we keep the tradition of the Negro spiritual going and we represent Odessa all over the state of Texas. We've been invited to places like San Antonio and Austin and other places because that form of singing is dying. I direct the group and some of my members are here and we love spreading the news. And whenever we go, we're representing Odessa, Texas. That was a direct result of this particular reunion. My sister said, "Look, we need to bring back the choir. We need to recognize James Elkins, a very, very accomplished maestro who was over the Wings Over Jordan Choir." Most people, if they are not up on their history, won't realize it was one of the most famous choirs internationally in the world at the time. And when Maya Angelou was here before her death a few years ago at UTPB, when she found out it was the James Elkins Singers, she made comments about not only him, but the choir. There are a lot of those stories that won't get told unless we tell them. And we're asking for the council's help this year. We would like to do a Hall of Fame. We've already started on a documentary with a lot of live video stories of former teachers and students. There are a lot of other things that we would like to do that will make this really, really special. We always have reunions in the hotels. We pay for rooms there to sleep in. We have our banquets there at the hotels and we have our dances there at the hotels and other functions. We always have a two also, so we can see the thought and work that has been done in the city. People are stounded after 50 years to come back home and see Odessa. So we know this is an unusual request, but we're asking for this time, this one time. We've had over 20 of these reunions, spending money, people coming in from all over the country. This time is a little special, our 50-year anniversary. We're asking for financial assistance in the amount of $15,000, which would represent about 40% of our budget.
Are there any questions? From Mr. Collins?
You mentioned James Elkins. Is he the, I remember a music teacher at Hayes Elementary. Is that him?
Yes, sir.
He was my music teacher then. He was a good guy.
I bet you didn't know that he was real renowned.
No, I didn't. I didn't know that. I was just like, man.
Yeah.
I remember.
He said Maya Angelou recognized him and his work.
Yeah. I admired him and he was very good with the kids. He, you know, he really motivated a lot of people. Thanks to him and thank you for bringing his name up.
You know, if you're going, based on the fact that it is Blackshire's 50th, I would be reluctant to approve because of the fact that it's out of order for what we usually approve, the hotel motel tax. But this is a special case. This is 50 years and it's a major part of this city. I would move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Thank you. I'm going to bring the James Elkins.
Mayor, I would move, would make a motion. Then we move, we take off the table number six and considering our next, I mean, no file, I'm sorry. Consider our next to do that.
Okay, we have a motion to remove from the table the replacement and purchase of the new fire trucks. And we have a motion to also move it up at the top in the same motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
First and second.
First and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we will remove, or we will consider the replacement of purchase of the fire trucks. Right, Mr. Chief Boy.
Like I say, it's great to see all you guys here and thank you for what you do for our city.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item is to consider the scheduled replacement of the current fleet of fire apparatus. Approval of this item will authorize the City of Odessa Fire Rescue to purchase seven engines and three ladders. The total purchase price is $7,385,114. This purchase will be from Sidtons Martin Emergency Group, which is an HGAC cooperative vendor. The purchase includes eight-year bumper-to-bumper warranty from Pierce Manufacturing. All of the trucks are budgeted replacement items and each of the replaced units will be sent to auction to help fund the purchase of leased equipment for this fleet. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I would like for you to explain to everyone why you're breaking with leasing the vehicles, or the fire trucks rather, and why we are purchasing them outright. I'm very impressed with that and so I would like for everyone to hear that.
Yes, ma'am. You know, we have purchased, I mean, we have done the lease in the past. For this go-around, we actually have money within our equipment services replacement budget to replace these at this current cost. And we estimate that's going to save us about a million dollars in finance charges. So it's a really, a very good thing for this community and for our department as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion. Take a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next, under public hearings, we will open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Self-Storage Solutions. Mr. Brandon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city mailed out 15 notices related to this case. We had zero notices returned. We did not receive any written approvals. We did receive four written protests relating to this case. The property involved in the request is located southwest of the intersection of Eastridge Road and Billy Hex Road. This site is currently zoned retail and it does contain two lots. On one lot, there is an existing mini warehouse self-storage facility and the second lot is currently vacant. Land use in this area does consist of Land use in this area does consist of single-family attached and detached residential development. There's also a mixture of office-retail development and vacant land in this area. The applicant in this case is Self-Storage Solutions. They do own the property, and Jonathan Martindale with U-Haul of West Texas is the agent and the optionee in this case. The purpose of the rezoning request is to designate a zoning that will allow a truck and trailer rental operation along with the self-storage facility that's existing on this property. Site plan has been submitted. This site plan is fairly large right there. Site plan does indicate the location of structures on the property. It does also indicate that there will be a truck and trailer rental operation. The site plan does indicate six display spaces that's adjacent to Billy Hex Road. It also has a service center, retail store that's located on the property, and a truck preparation area that's on the north part of the property. And approximately ten percent of the landscaping of this lot will be done in a ziriscape with West Texas adaptive plans. The proposed rezoning of the property to plan development like commercial is generally consistent with the office and retail and various residential uses as proposed and the existing comprehensive plan for this area. However, the applicant is proposing the addition and introduction of a commercial use, and in this case it'll be the truck and trailer rental services, to the existing retail uses in this area. This will necessitate the incorporation of development buffers and standards that will minimize any impact to surrounding properties. The property adjacent is adjacent to a major thoroughfare, as stated previously. It is Billy Hex Road, and this thoroughfare is designed to accommodate traffic that's generated by the mixture of uses in this area. It's also designed to carry traffic from Highway 191 to Business 20. The traffic generated by the proposed truck and trailer rental use would not have a negative impact or increase the traffic flow of Billy Hex Road. The proposed rezoning of the truck and trailer rental services on this property would be a positive for the multitude of multifamily residential developments that's in this area. There's approximately twelve apartments within a mile of this development. However, the staff is concerned with the impact that this use might have on adjacent properties, and that way, the Planning and Zoning Commission did give a unanimous approval with the adoption of these development standards and buffers, that specifics related to the landscape and ziriscape area that's shown on this site plan will be presented to the planning department for review and approval prior to development. All signage for this development would meet ordinance requirements, that the number of rental vehicles on display during business hours would not exceed six, and the number of rental vehicles on display after business hours would not exceed four. This way, it wouldn't appear to be a truck and trailer lot in this area. And also adoption of this site plan. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Brinkley?
Isn't there right now, is there a restriction on trucks going up and down the road in that area?
These trucks would not exceed the weight limit for that, Councilman. These are just standard U-Haul moving trucks, and they're not the heavy eighteen-wheel trucks in this that would be restricted from this area.
Can you go to this slide?
As far as aerial, I don't have aerial on this one right here, Councilman. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I was just kind of wondering, that PDH, what does that mean? Or does it show that there's going to be some lots? Is that going to be future development?
Not sure the PDH, what you're looking at here, it's right across the street. That is a planned development housing. It's the Texas Star Single Family Residential Subdivision over there. That's what that is.
So, but nobody's there right now, but there's a developer could build houses.
Oh, you're talking about the PDH to the west. I'm sorry. That's vacant right now. That is owned by Wiley Brown. It is vacant. Wiley did contact office and said he is neutral in this case. Didn't have a response either way.
So is that the area Wiley's going to put in housing or put in a business?
It's zoned planned development housing. He does have plans to do that. He just doesn't know when he's going to do it. And as stated, he did contact office, and I explained to him exactly what was going in, and he remained neutral, said it wouldn't impact his property.
Before the protest, what was their objection, did they say?
Mainly just, I think, the concept or their perception that they have of a truck and trailer rental place. That's the main thing that they indicated on their cards, and I believe the council had copied those in their package.
Okay. Any more questions?
Well, usually I would be automatically against this because it's in a neighborhood. But the storage buildings are already there, and when looking at it, looks, well, not very attractive, but something like that.
You might let...
I have seen pictures of what they want to do, and they want to landscape it.
Yes, ma'am.
And they definitely do not want the typical U-Haul building.
The action is here.
I would be very much against. It appears to me it will be enhanced. Then why is there? That part impresses me. I...
Let me bring Mr. Martindale up.
Yeah, Mr. Martindale is here, and he might be able to...
This is a public hearing, so I will ask Mr. Martindale, he has asked to speak.
Good evening to Mayor Turner and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today. My name is Jonathan Martindale. I am the marketing company president for the U-Haul Company of West Texas. Our proposal in front of the city council today would allow us to adaptively reuse an existing storage facility while infilling development with mixed-use truck sharing and rental destination at 3463 Billy Hex Drive. The proposal U-Haul facility would add to the property values of this facility by creating an environmentally appealing structure that emphasizes the look and feel of the surrounding community. With the use of architecturally compatible designs and attractive landscaping, we believe that we will enhance and complement the neighborhood area. Now, in working with staff, we'd be more willing to work with them to segregate any negative impact that we believe, or anybody believes, that the truck and trailer rental would have on this piece of property. So we've been doing this for over fifty years. U-Haul's been recognized as symbol of quality and reliability, and we've created a track record of stability in every community that we serve. So I appreciate your time and any questions that you may have.
Any questions? I would like to pass the gavel because I am going to express my opinion. Mr. Martindale, I appreciate you coming here, but unfortunately, the last two U-Haul rental places we have had have looked horrible. There was one on Maple and Tanglewood that was in a gas station that had old trucks, overgrown weeds, and looked horrible. The other one was probably ten years ago, and it was on Andrews Highway. It was down past University towards Fourth Second. Had U-Hauls there, it looks horrible. My concern is, we're going to get another one that looks bad. And I appreciate the landscaping, I appreciate things like that, but in my opinion, we don't need one if it's going to look trashy. And the last two I've seen looked bad. How are we going to know that this one's not going to end up in the same way with old trucks and old trailers? So how do we know this is going to look nice?
I understand your concerns. Our rental fleet is being updated on a consistent basis. I understand the old trailer, old truck concept. We don't have anything that's older than ten years in our one-way rental fleet right now, and continually to develop that as we move forward. Everything's being changed out on a yearly basis. We don't want the concept of old trucks and old trailers. We take that very personal. Now, the facilities that you speak of, one was an independent business operation, all right, that is known all around that corner. And he was there for many, many years. And I understand, you know, the concepts of that, and that kind of goes back to the direction of the independent business operator and the model that they set for themselves. Now, our operations on Andrews Highway, we spent a lot of time and effort and money in that facility over the last ten years to bring it up to a higher level of standard. Unfortunately, that facility, we have outgrown that facility. This city has outgrown that facility. We currently only have that little facility. It's a two-bay gas station that was converted forty years ago. It was the best we had forty years ago. We're not the same company that we worked for years ago. We've completely gone through with new design buildings, structures. I've got, you know, some examples. I'd be more than happy to show you some of the new designs that we're using on our facilities. We want to blend in with the community. We want to be part of the community. We've been here for over forty years. You know, I assure you that the biggest opportunity that we have in the Odessa market right today is there's not enough facilities in the community to service the people that live here. And that's, unfortunately, is an opportunity that at a busy time, it'll get busy and it'll get compacted with a lot of inventory because there's just not enough facility to handle the business that this community has. And that's our opportunity today is, excuse me, is to try and add to that so we minimize that impact at every location we have.
Okay. Go ahead, take the gavel. Any other questions?
So you're planning on closing the one on Andrews Highway?
We are.
Okay. Since it's a public hearing, so is there any more, is there any comment from the audience? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I move for approval with restrictions, having some noted within the...
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, unanimous. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion is for, or the vote's four to one, and it passes. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the limousine franchise application of Desert Luxury Transportation. Mr. Ball.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request for a five-year franchise from Desert Luxury Transportation. They would be operating a Ford eighteen-person passenger bus for parties, kinseneros, proms, etc. And they would allow music to be played off of the phones from the passengers. They would have televisions. It would rent for two hundred and twenty dollars an hour. This application has been reviewed and technically approved, and I believe Mr. Galindo, the manager, is here to speak.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ball? Come on, Mr. Galindo.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor of the City Council. Yes, my name is Elvis Galindo, and I am the owner of Desert Luxury Transportation. It's like everything he said, he pretty much gave a description of what we are capable of doing out of that little bus. Basically, we are a limousine service, but we are a little bit upgraded. We run out of a bus, which this provides like, I guess you could say, like a small club environment on wheels. And basically, we play music for them. We have videos. People have a great time on the bus. Like you said, we do, we have a hourly charge, a minimum charge, we charge by the hour, which is two hundred and twenty dollars an hour with a two-hundred-dollar deposit. The customer would rent by the hour, and we fully take care of the customer while they're with us. We do run a general liability, I believe that's required by you guys. We run a half-a-million-dollar general liability on the bus, which we would cover any kind of accident or any kind of, anything that might go wrong on that bus, but as far as personal injury and anything that might go wrong.
Okay, are there any questions?
How many can you take in there?
The bus is registered to be an eighteen-passenger bus. Normally, adults, we say about sixteen adults come to fool in the bus. I usually try to keep it at sixteen adults.
Alcohol being served?
We do not serve the alcohol. I believe the person that we bought it for was Evil Inc., E.I. Transportation. And the way they have it set up is the customer, it's a BYOB type of setup, which they bring their own alcohol. And we do not provide it for them. They bring it on and they pretty much take care of their drugs. We are, we keep it separated to where the customer sits in the back of the bus, and we have a driver that pretty much sits in the front and watches everybody. When we have our parties, which are our grown-up parties, the way we have it set up is they get on, they bring their drinks or whatever, they have their fun. We do restroom breaks, which I try to keep them at truck stops, which, by the way, I am the driver on the bus. And we try to keep them where they stay organized while we do have restroom breaks at truck stops and stuff like that.
Okay, any more questions, Mr. Council? Okay. Thank you.
Our main focus on the bus is what we do is quinceañeras. Quinceañeras is like a sweet sixteen celebration. And basically, what we do on our typical Saturday is they have their church celebration. We usually pick them up, and the kids will usually have their break. It's about an hour, two-hour break before they go to a reception. And the kids enjoy this time while their parents prepare for the reception, and then we drop the kids off at a reception. And that usually serves our quinceañera parties, or sweet sixteen.
Just a question, if it's BYOB, do you check the IDs to make sure everybody is...
Yes, yes, sir. We have a contract that when the person that signs the contract, they are, and I don't have one with me today, but they are responsible for the people that are riding on the bus. We are making no exceptions that they are responsible if minors are on the bus, and if they do look like they're minors, that we do have the right to check for IDs. And if at any time we feel that there is a minor, even if we do, even if we don't check their IDs, if we feel that there is a minor on the bus, the contract is completely canceled, and everybody goes home and the party's over.
So you allow no alcoholic beverages on there if minors present?
I'm sorry, sir.
You allow no alcoholic beverages on there if there's minors present?
When the minors are present, we don't allow any alcohol.
Very good.
And, you know, there's been situations, and that's where I say that the person that's signing the contract is the one responsible, is the person mostly responsible for, if minors do bring alcohol on the bus for some reason, you know, they hide it on their jackets or whatever, whatever reason, we do specify that minors will not have any alcohol on this bus. Because for the most part, quinceañeras is what we do. And I absolutely do not allow any alcohol and minors on the bus.
Very good.
Any more questions? Mr. Grubel, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passing, unanimous. Thank you very much. Next, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider the allocation of seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-four, two thousand and sixteen community development block grants, and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two in unprogrammed CDV funds. Ms. Sandball.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, you have before you the request for the CDVG and Home funding for the two thousand and sixteen program year. Our two thousand and sixteen allocation in CDVG funds is seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars, and the city also has sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars in unprogrammed funds that are also available for allocation projects tonight. The city's home fund allocation has changed from what is in your book. Had notified us on Friday that our allocation would now be two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. And in addition, we have sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars in programming income for home projects. These funds are available for allocation to eligible projects, and the requests are summarized in your book. However, since the distribution of the book, there has been a withdrawal of one of the applications, and that's the application for the Woodson Park parking lot, as they have found funding from other sources to take care of that project. Please note the following caps are in effect for these funds. The public service cap is one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The CB administration cap is one hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars, and our home administration cap is twenty-three thousand and ninety-six dollars. In order to provide the services that our department provides, I am making the following request. For program administration, I'm requesting nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two... For program administration, I'm requesting nine-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. That covers the administrative costs for the department. Housing administration, I'm asking for four-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. This covers our housing rehab reconstruction program. And in some cases, we do some minor repair and emergency repair. It also covers the salary of the construction coordinator and our housing assistant. For demolition, I'm requesting one-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand dollars. This will cover the salary and operating costs of the demolition inspector and funding to remove structures for the next year. Just a side note, the funding on demolition is, we only have like seventy-nine dollars left for program. So, and that's all of the big requests that I have, if you have any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Samuel? We do have two citizens who would like to speak. First is Karen Hildebrand.
Thank you, Council. I am with the Crisis Center, and we are requesting funding for a new shelter. We've requested fifty-thousand dollars to help us build a shelter located on land that is originally purchased with CDBG funds back in nineteen-seventy-eight. The city council graciously donated the land to us last July, and this fifty-thousand-dollar request would go towards the shelter building itself. And that's what we would like to request for part of this funding.
Any questions, Ms. Hildebrand? Thank you. The next is Margaret Berta.
I want to thank y'all for giving us this opportunity to see you again. You know, this is about the only time we get to meet our city council people, and I do appreciate it very much. You know, Meals on Wheels has been Odessa since nineteen-seventy-seven. We have been so really underprivileged people that maybe cannot have a hot new day meal. And through your efforts through the past years, you have helped us alleviate some of that problem. This year, we are upping our request a little bit, thirty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-eight, due to the fact of increase in requests for service. Things are tough out there for the elderly or even for the people that are on such low income. Our average client income is around eight-twenty-five a month. Many of you met that maybe in a week. But, you know, these people are struggling. Right now, for the past two months, we have been adding fourteen people a month to our roles. So we are stretching a little bit. These are people that's in their late seventies, eighties, in the nineties even. I had a request this week from a ninety-six-year-old woman, lives up here in one of our older parts of town. She said, "You know, I've never asked for help before, but I need it now. I just can't hear, I can't get around, I can't drive. They took my driver's license away from me several years ago. I thought, well, thank God." I remember Marjorie Morris, and many of y'all do too. When you saw Marjorie on the parking lot, you just stopped your car and waited. But, you know, this is the type of... This is the type of people that we're getting requests from. It's not somebody that just wants a free lunch. These people need it. So I am requesting this increase from y'all this year. And I appreciate it very much.
Margaret, this is the first increase I've heard you have in how many years?
Many, many years. As long as it's been here, I've been asking Barbara, and you know that. And like I say in my statements when I write to y'all, I will be requesting funds for my elderly people every year that it's available because I cannot think of better people that need the help. They have paid their dues to Odessa. They were the workers that helped build us. And so now it's time for them to have a little helping hand.
So many of them would not have anything...
That's exactly right. You know, we started a dog feed program, dog and cat food program, due to the fact so many of our clients were dividing that meal with their pets. So we have been soliciting dog and cat food from some of our merchants and everything because our clients need their full meal. So I do thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us visit with you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to address counsel on this agenda item? Okay, we will... Oh, come on up, Jill. You're quiet back there? No, no.
I don't even know how to talk to y'all after Mark did.
Yeah, she's a hard act to follow.
I should have gone first when I was thinking. I'm Jill Miller. I'm the executive director of Odessa Affordable Housing. We call that AWI, and we have requested twenty-five thousand for our margin superfare program. In this program, we help elderly, disabled, and single-parent households. So we do help some of the ones that Margaret came up and talked to y'all about. Karen and I were saying, we feel bad for asking you after her show. But we have been doing this since two thousand and two, and we've helped almost four hundred households and have even put a dent in the need that there is for requests. We do work in conjunction with community development with this program, so they refer people over to us for minor repairs. We do things such as ADA showers, toilets, ramps, plumbing, electricals, safety, security needs, so windows, drawers, things that are needed to keep them safe. And most of the families that we assist are probably less than twenty-five percent of the community, so they're very low income and probably don't have the funds to do these repairs. So we typically spend two-to-five thousand dollars per household and try and help them. We appreciate your consideration. Any questions?
Good question. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, we will move to Councilmember Burt Bryant to start us off.
In order to accommodate the three agencies' requests this year, I'd like to propose the following. Twenty-five thousand to Odessa Affordable Housing. Fifty thousand to the Crisis Center. Thirty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars to Meals on Wheels. As to the community development request for the program administration, sixty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. Housing rehab, four-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. And demolition, one-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand. I believe that totals the eight.
Did I make a mistake?
Yeah.
You need to enter... Can you just put down the numbers?
Yeah, I did, just seven, six, I got the little miles, I got that. And then this was four, right?
Thirty-five, five, ninety-eight. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sure.
What about the parks? Parks is...
Nothing on the parks.
Anything on rehab? Does it have a rehab?
I swear when I did that up three times, it comes to eight-forty-four, oh, ninety-six.
Did you put in rehab?
Sixty-four, nine, seventy-two for admin, right?
Sixty-four, nine, seventy-two, four, seventy-four, five, twenty-six. One-ninety-four, that should equal seven-thirty-three, nine, four, ninety-eight, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the other three added together should end up to one-teen, if I recall.
Twenty-five, fifty, and thirty-five, five, ninety-eight.
What about rehab and preservation? Is that what came from, that is twenty-five?
That, go down a little bit.
Yeah, that should, that should equal...
Eight-forty-four.
I did the math on the phone.
So we're just...
Look at the formula right there at the bottom.
Well, I can't, yeah, I'm sorry.
Trying to put the...
Well, we, you know, if we got twenty-five left, I'll give it to... That strikes.
Yeah, you don't have, that allocation equals the eighty-four, four, nine...
Okay, okay.
We're good, sorry about that.
Correct, correct. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, no, I'm sorry, it's my fault.
Now we go to the end, councilmember.
I appreciate the phone calls I got. I got to talk to Meals on Wheels, I'm sorry, Margaret. Margaret, I really appreciate that phone call. Thank you for everything you can do. My partner reminded me that I better be really nice to you because I could be using your services there.
You got ghetto sometimes.
So, in saying that, Meals on Wheels, thirty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-eight. Crisis Center, fifty thousand.
You're up there on top.
Affordable Housing, twenty-five thousand. Community development requests. Looking for the program administration, sixty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-two. Housing rehabilitation, four-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-six. Demolition, four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand.
That's good.
That's it.
That's it.
Councilman Burner?
Well, I'll rub along with the rest of them.
Ditto.
Ditto. Ditto, I'll save all the, I'll save all the numbers. That's a...
Okay, so you put those in, and that makes three, which is passing. Do we need to get everybody's, Larry? Or do, can we just approve that since we have three? You need to go ahead and get everybody's. Okay. Ms. Graff, you're up next.
Uh, I, I believe in all of these programs so desperately. And this year, I'm going to have to abstain because I would have a conflict of interest, so...
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank goodness, we got three of them. Thank y'all.
Ms. McNeil?
I, I'm going to agree. Margaret called me, and I appreciate her calling me, and I enjoyed the visit. What was her increase that she asked for?
Ten thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. From Lester.
Up from Lester?
Hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
So did we...
Okay, good.
Ms. McNeil?
I'm good.
You want to do ditto, too?
Yes.
Okay. We have another ditto.
This is pretty, pretty...
This is pretty...
Oh, yeah, come on, that's...
Can't forget about home.
All right, Jill, come back then.
Thank y'all, thank y'all for what y'all do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your involvement. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, we have four that match. So we need to move on to the home funds. And we'll let her catch up.
Sorry.
Oh, no problem, I appreciate you doing that.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, we're now on home funds, and we'll go the same way. Councilmember Bryant?
Full of map, two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars.
I got it, go ahead.
Okay. Next, councilmember with us.
Housing rehabilitation, construction, two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-two.
Two-thirty-six, eight, forty-two?
Mm-hmm. Home program, twenty-two-thousand-nine-ninety-three.
SEO number?
Oh. Yeah. Fully fund the...
There you go, I like that. Can you erase that off the camera, please?
No, I saved it.
It's okay. It's all right.
She can erase it.
Councilman Burner?
Uh, fully fund the whole, the whole two-ninety-five, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven.
Ms. Brown?
Fund the entire program at two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Let her answer that.
No, you're good, go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember McNeil?
I'm just looking at the wall.
Okay. Okay, fully funded. Ms. Ball, do we need individual motions to approve? No, you can leave it. I'll entertain a motion to approve both the home funds. That's what I'm calling. Oh, yes, okay. Let's, first, I'll entertain a motion for the CDBG funds.
Some of, second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have one extension for the CDBG funds. Next, a move to the home funds, I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry.
The motion's next, and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again for coming tonight.
Good luck with your programs.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
David wants to dance with the stars.
I know why, I know why. I'll recommend it to you.
You said you want to dance with the stars?
No.
No, I think you should.
Okay, next, we'll move to number seven. Consider adopting a new in-state natural gas rate reflecting the settlement between ATMS, West Texas City Steering Committee. Mr. Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of this resolution is to approve a rate change under the rate review mechanism. As a result of the negotiations with the West Texas Standing Committee in ATMS, the executive committee was able to reduce the company's request by a million dollars. You have the rates in your back.
Okay, are there any questions?
Yeah, I just wish in the future, yes, we need to fight for the rates. But I just wish we could sit down and do it in a friendly manner where it doesn't cost so much money. That would be my aim for next year. Or, I guess, probably next year, we'll enter into one. To see if we could work with our utility companies to, let's just sit down and work this out nicely where they don't have to pay a lot of money and we don't either have to get a settlement. And that may be impossible, but that would be my goal.
Okay, are there any more comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So...
We have a second. After motion's second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hildebrand. Next, we move to appointments of boards, which we have none to appoint. Next, move to...
We tabled number nine.
Hearing a motion to table number nine, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And we have no more citizen comments on the non-agenda items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If council could consider the number four, the comprehensive master plan?
Miss Rado, I apologize.
I'd make the motion that we table that.
Okay, do we have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Rado. And we are adjourned.